We will start the meeting.
Good to go.
Okay, good, thank you. So, we are returning from executive session. It is 6:43 PM. And I need to open up the public session.
I'll make the motion, Sonya, it's Carrie.
Carrie, thank you. And a second, please.
Eric, seconds.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, all those in favor? Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. We are back in open session. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, so, um... We are going to, I think, do you have a picture of the flag that you can put up for us? Do you have that available? We're gonna, for the public that's viewing with us tonight, we're starting a new year, so we're gonna try to, being that Zoom seems to be the new normal, we're gonna try to incorporate our pledge. Oh, wait, what is that? Are you gonna hit play on something? And then... Which is fine. What, were you gonna hit play and have it recite it for us? Chris, I can't hear you if you're talking.
Yeah, it's just the flag waving. There's no words or anything.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure what's gonna happen. Okay. Um, alright, so there's the flag, so we're good to go. And, perfect, thank you. Okay, so, we can all please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, as the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, um, so we start off this evening, it is our reorganizational meeting of the year. And we start off with our oath of office for our two newly-elected trustees. And because we're in this Zoom setting, I'm actually, if it's okay, I'll just do Carrie first and then Francine, because normally when we're in person, you both stand up and we recite it together, but I think just for the sake of those viewing, if you can each take your turn. So, first, if I can ask Carrie Cunningham to raise your right hand, and do you, you should have a copy of your oath of office?
I do, I have it on the agenda.
Perfect, thank you. So if you could please, your hand is raised, and just recite the oath of office, please.
Yes, I, Carrie Cunningham, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the trustee of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you. And now, if you could, you have your oath of office, if you can just please sign, there's a written oath, and if you can also please make sure that that gets into our district clerk by the end of the month, there's a 30-day period that it would need to get into her, so she just has that official copy as well.
I will.
Okay, thank you, and welcome. Okay, now, Francine Santos, there you are, if you could please raise your right hand as well?
Okay.
And you have your oath of office in front of you as well?
I do.
Great, thank you. If you could please recite your oath of office.
Okay. I, Francine Santos, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Great, thank you so much. And, same as well. And, your written oath is actually, is already taken care of, so you're all set with that. Okay, so you both sworn in, I think I did that correctly? Anyone correct me if I did it not, but I think we're good. So, welcome Francine as well. And now we move on to election of officers. And so first up is President of the Board of Education. And are there any nominations for this position?
I nominate Sonya Masika as President.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any other nominations for President? Hearing no other nominations. All those in favor of Sonya Masika, I know it's a little awkward to do it this way, but you have to do it this way today. So, um, all those in favor of Sonya Masika, how do you vote? Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, I can vote for myself, I'll vote for myself, yes. The motion for, well, it's not a motion, but the nomination passes for myself to be President again for one more year. Thank you very much, everyone. I'm, I am honored, I know it's a lot of work, and I am truly thankful that you have faith and respect in me to continue the work that I've done. And I'm always open to any constructive criticism that my, you know, fellow trustees have, and how we can work together always better, and for me to do better in this role. So, thank you. And I do still, though, need to take an oath of office now, so Carrie Cunningham has to administer it, she is a, just for the public watching, normally we've had in the past Susan Gavin, but since we have a new district clerk that has to still be appointed a little later in the, shortly coming up on the agenda, that's hence why we're doing the agenda this way today. So, Carrie Cunningham is a notary, and so she will do the oath of office for me.
Okay, Sonya, do you have the oath in front of you?
Um, I do, yes.
Okay, so if you could raise your right hand and recite the oath?
I, Sonya Masika, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. It's all yours for another year, Sonya.
No one else was jumping at the chance? Thank you again, everyone. Okay, um, so we will continue. So next up is Vice President of the Board of Education. And are there any nominations for this position?
Sonya, I'd like to nominate Carrie Cunningham for the position of Vice President.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. We will then go to the vote. And if I may ask, who is in favor of Carrie Cunningham to serve as Vice President for this year? And I start with Carrie Cunningham. How do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. And the nomination of Carrie Cunningham passes 5-0. Okay. Congratulations. Welcome to another year as well. Again, no one else jumping at the chance, huh? It's a lot of work, it is a lot of work, and I think we've all seen that, you know, the block was done in a district, and hopefully we will continue to all work together, and just, we are a team, so it's really just who kinda takes the brunt of the hits. But collectively, we will continue to do our best. So, okay, we now move on to appointment of, oh, actually, I apologize. Okay, one more thing, yes. So, just a bit of clarification, in our research and doing our organizational agenda and putting together this agenda, we discovered a discrepancy in one of our policies in terms of education law. So this next item, C, which indicates Putnam County Legislative Representative?
To Sonya?
Yes.
I have to do?
Do I have to do the oath?
Oh, we didn't, I didn't do your oath, I'm so sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Okay. Carrie, yep, raise your right hand. And please, you have your oath in front of you for Vice President, I think it's on the screen also?
Yes, I, Carrie Cunningham, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, sorry. So now we can move on to C. So this item is not, under education law, it's not an officer position, it's been historically, for some reason in Brewster, just an item that we have in our policy listed under the policy discussing election of officers, but it's not an official officer position, so there's no oath of office to it. So I, but I couldn't move it out of this section on this agenda for today because it's technically in our policy listed this way. So we will fix that for next year, and we will put it in a more appropriate place and later in the agenda, and we can have a more discussion about the role at another time. But for now, to stay consistent with our policy, it is in this section, it won't require an oath of office, but would anyone like to recommend someone for this role, or would someone like to, um, offer to be in the role? And Scott, I know you served in the role for the past year, would you like to continue in the role?
I would like to continue in the role if possible.
Okay. Anyone else interested in this position? No one else? Okay, so then, we'll just go to a vote on this item for Scott, and because it's technically listed here, I have to do it that way. Later, for like, the next round of appointments, we can do them collectively, but for this one, we'll, we still have to do it separately because we did A and B separately. So, if we can just go through, all those in favor of Scott Seaman continuing in this role, Putnam County Legislative Representative for this upcoming school year, Ms. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. And this nomination passes as well. 5-0. So thank you, Scott, and we'll, as a group, we'll discuss more how we can help support you in that role. Okay, so now we can move on to C, appointment of officers. One, A District Clerk, Lauren Zagorski Truel. B District Treasurer, Susan Morgan, Deputy Treasurer, Elena Graham Nash, School Business Administrator. D Receiver of Taxes, Susan Tobacco for Southeast and Carmel, Mary Dylanoy for Patterson. E Claims Auditor, Linda Carpenter. I need a motion for the appointment of these officers, please.
This is Scott, I make the motion.
Okay, Scott, thank you. And a second?
This is Francine, I second.
Okay, thank you. And, um, all those in favor? Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. This item passes 5-0. So now, I need to do the oath of office for Ms. Truel, and I believe she is present. See if I can scroll down to find you, there you are. Hi, welcome. Congratulations, welcome to the district. Do you have your oath in front of you?
Yes.
Great. So if you could please just raise your right hand and recite the oath.
I, Lauren Zagorski Truel, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk of the Board of Education according to best of my ability.
Great, thank you so much. And next year, you can, we can discuss the board meeting differently. So welcome, okay, so I think we're good for this section. We now can move on to other appointments. Let's see. And one is Legal Counsel and Medical Services. A, General Counsel, Thomas Drowhin, Waxman, Pedagone Mail, LLP. B, Bond Counsel, Hawkins, Della Field and Wood, LLP. C, School Physician, Dr. Louis Casaro. D, School Athletic Trainer Provider, AON, Physical Therapy and Wellness. I need a motion for this item.
Sonya, it's Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Okay, and a second, please.
Eric makes the second.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy?
Yep, we heard you. Okay, questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Ms. Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. And the motion passes 5-0. Number two, Audit and Financial Services. A, External Auditors, O'Connor Davies, LLP. B, Internal Auditors, Tobin and Company, PC. C, Fiscal Advisors, Capital Markets, LLP. I need a motion, please.
It's Francine, I make a motion.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Scott, I'll make the second.
Questions or comments from the board? Okay. Hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Next up, three Finance and Operations Officers. A, Records Management Officer, Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. B, Records Access Officer, Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. C, Annual Budget Vote Registars, Gigi Farrell, Susan Morgan, Kathy Keen, Amri Kowaleski. D, Purchasing Agent and Alternates, Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance Operations, with Michelle Gosh, Assistant Superintendent, and Brett Harrington, Director of Human Resources as Alternates. E, Asbestos, LEA, A-H-E-R-A, Designee Kenneth Wench. F, Chief Emergency Officer, Glenn Friar, Director of Facilities. I need a motion for this item.
The motion?
Carrie, thank you, and a second?
Eric makes the second.
Thank you, any questions on this item? Okay, hearing none. How do you vote? Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Four, Human Resources and Student Services Officers. A, Title IX Compliance Officers, Brent Harrington, Director of Human Resources, and Michelle Gosh, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. B, Title VI Officer, Michelle Gosh, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. C, Section 504 Compliance Officer, Elizabeth Kennedy, Director of Pupil Personnel Services. D, Residency Officer, Andres Alvarez. E, Data Protection Officer, Jim Trelor, Director of Technology and Innovation. F, Attendance Officers, High School Carlos Rodriguez, Middle School Christian Hernandez, Intermediate School Keith Allen, Elementary School John Conroy. I need a motion for this item, please.
Francine, I make the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Scott, I make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, we can go to the vote. Ms. Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Number five, Committee on Special Education, Special Appointments. See attached, we have that attached in the board docs. Impartial Hearing Officers. B, Committee on Special Education. CSE. C, Committee on Preschool Special Education, CPSE. D, Section 504 Committee. May I have a motion for this item?
I'll make the motion.
Carrie, thank you, and a second?
This is Eric, I'll make the second.
Thank you, questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Number six, Extra Classroom Activity Fund, ECAF, Officers. A, Central Treasurer, High School, Robin Welch. B, Central Treasurer, Middle School, Paula Flower. C, Chief Faculty Counselor, High School, Nicole Horler. D, Chief Faculty Counselor, Middle School, John Clark. E, Faculty Auditor, Susan Morgan. I need a motion on this item, please.
Francine, I make the motion.
And a second, please?
This is Scott, I make the second.
Thank you, questions or comments? Okay, um, and we go to the vote, Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Designations. One, A, Official Banks and Bank Accounts, also attached in the board docs. B, Banks for CD Investments Only, Tompkins, MEAPAC, National Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, and M&amp;T Bank. C, Official Newspapers, The Journal News and the Putnam County Courier. I need a motion for this item, please?
I'll make the motion.
And a second, I'm sorry, that was Carrie?
Sorry, that was Carrie.
Okay, and a second?
Eric makes the second.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. And we now move on to authorizations. One, to certify payrolls, Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, with Elena Nash Graham, School Business Administrator as alternate. I need a motion, please?
It's Francine, I make the motion.
And a second?
This is Scott, I make the second.
Thank you, questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops, Attendance Approval with Expenses. Brent Harrington, Director of Human Resources. Michelle Gosh, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Assessment and Instruction. Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I need a motion for this item, please?
I'll make the motion, it's Carrie.
And a second?
This is Eric, I'll second.
Thank you, questions or comments? Hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Three, Establishment of Petty Cash Funds and Change Funds. A, Each School Building, $75. B, Transportation Department, $50. C, Child Nutrition Department, Change Funds for Four School Buildings, $400. I need a motion, please?
This is Francine, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
Scott makes the second.
Thank you, questions or comments? Hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Four, Designation of Signatures on Checks. A, General Fund, School Lunch Fund, Agency Fund, Payroll Account, Special Aid Fund, Capital Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Special Purpose Fund. Susan Morgan, Treasurer, and/or Elena Nash Graham, School Business Administrator with Superintendent of Schools as alternate. B, Extra Classroom Activity Fund. One, High School Nicole Horler, Robin Welch with Superintendent of Schools as alternate. Two, Middle School John Clark, Paula Flower with Superintendent of Schools as alternate. I need a motion for this item?
I'll make the motion, it's Carrie.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Eric, I'll second.
Thank you, questions or comments from the board?
I just have one quick question. Everyone's name is down there except for Dr. Banlow. Is there a reason, I guess it's more of a title thing than a...
Well, I mean, she is their superintendent of schools, I don't know that it matters, but...
Just curious, that's it.
Victor, does it matter that, does her name need to be listed specifically? Do you know?
No, because, no, because the approval pass for each of these goes through each of the Assistant Superintendent's Director of Human Resources.
Okay, Scott, you good? Okay, anyone else? Okay, so, we go to the vote. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Five, Budget Transfers. On Chief School Officer's Approval, Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, with Elena Nash Graham, School Business Administrator as alternate. I need a motion, please?
Francine, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, second?
This is Scott, I'll make the slow second after that one.
Okay, questions or comments? Hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Applications for Grants and Aid, State and Federal, Superintendent of Schools, and/or Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Motion, please?
I'll make the motion, it's Carrie.
Thank you, a second?
Eric makes the second.
Thank you, questions or comments? Okay, Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Seven, Participation in Cooperative Services, Coasters, and Bids with Bosse's, Superintendent of Schools, and/or Victor Carlson, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I need a motion, please?
Francine, I make the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Scott, I make the second.
Thank you, questions or comments? Hearing none. We go to the vote, Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Retsner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. G, Other Items. One, A, Establishment of Mileage Reimbursement Rate Per IRS Statute. B, Reauthorization of Vendor-Specific Credit Cards. C, Reauthorization of Cell Phone Users. D, Faithful Performance Blanket Bond Fiscal Officers. Need a motion for this item?
I'll make the motion, it's Carrie.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Eric, I'll second.
Thank you, and questions or comments?
One quick question. I believe there's a policy in place on the use of the credit cards and who's authorized to use them and such, that's all in place already?
Yes, there is board policy that authorizes the use of vendor-specific credit cards, and we have two, we have one to Home Depot and an Exxon mobile card. And attached to the agenda item is the listing of the employees who have the, are in possession of those credit cards.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um. Go to the vote. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Mesika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Two, Readoption of All Existing Policies. The Code of Ethics and Public Officers Law, Section 18 Protection. I need a motion for this item, please.
Francine, I make the motion.
Thank you. And a second?
This is Scott, I make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. We go to the vote. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Mesika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. And at this time, um. I hope everyone had the opportunity to print out the two documents. The two policies, the Code of Ethics and the Code of Conduct. Policies for us to sign, and if everyone could just take a moment now to sign them, and then we'll get them into the district clerk as well. Okay, thank you, everyone. List, we're next up is List of Association Memberships. New, one, A New York State School Boards Association. B Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. I need a motion for this item, please.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And a second?
This is Eric, I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia Mesika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. I, Establishment of Board Committees and Membership. One, Required Committees. A Audit Committee, Board of Ed Members. So we will have to have this discussion, but let me read through it first, and then we can break it down. Board of Ed Members, Ms. Mesika Tentative and To Be Determined. Community Members, To Be Determined. B School Health and Emergency Preparedness, Shep Committee. Board of Ed Members, Mr. Gretzner Tentative. Community Members, To Be Determined. C Wellness Committee, Board of Ed Members, To Be Determined. Community Members, To Be Determined. So before I ask for a motion on this item, I'm thinking we need to first discuss what we're making a motion on, so who would be in those roles? So. Let's see, first up is Audit Committee. What I was thinking also, because we are going to, there's another round of committees here. If we, if you guys were open to it, we could each choose, you know, assign at least one board person here to each of the committees in one and two. And then we can assign a second person, because usually we have two people per committee, and we can do, we can complete this in August. So we can start that tonight and complete it in August, because it is likely that we will appoint two additional members to the board, and of course, we would want them to be involved in committees. So. We can, if everyone's okay with that idea. Let's see, so audit. I'm okay with continuing on audit unless someone would really like to be on audit. I'm okay with letting that go. Is anyone dying to get on audit? No one's, no one's unmuting themselves. Okay, I'll stay. And so then, the second person we can determine at the next meeting. For Shep. Mr. Gretzner, you served on it last year. Did you want to continue? Did anybody else want to jump on that committee?
Yeah, I'd be happy to continue serving.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that for now? Okay. So that there, and we have the Wellness Committee. We don't have a Board of Ed Member listed now. Carrie, were you on that committee? I wasn't sure if that was...
I was on it for a couple of years, and then I don't know who took it over from me. But yeah.
Who would like to add their name to that? Anyone? So actually, maybe what I can do is ask one of our administrators, what is the meeting time and/or obligation to Wellness Committee? We're all going to have to serve on two committees somewhere, and we do have another few others coming up. So maybe one of our administrators can help us in just going over when that meets and what it consists of.
Sonia, I can speak to that, and I think one of the issues or one of the challenges that we had is that this meeting typically took place after our, you know, morning rush and right before our lunch rush in terms of preparation, which was convenient, of course, for our Child Nutrition Department, recognizing that we can move to shift the meeting times to a more appropriate time, you know, perhaps earlier in the morning or much later in the afternoon. But typically, the committee meets maybe three or four times a year each quarter, and probably more likely that we'll be meeting just two or three times a year.
Victor, can you explain what the committee does?
Sure, so we have a wellness policy, and that policy covers all types of things from child nutrition to fitness. There's a mental health component, and there's also, you know, a subcommittee with mental health. So it's all things wellness, again, from child nutrition to physical fitness. And again, it's, you know, required by board policy.
Thank you, Victor. If the times are moved to not the middle of the day, and they're either earlier or later, I consider the committee.
Okay. So we can, I'll put your name down, Francine. And then, um. As we go forward, when they're looking to set up their first meeting, they can figure out a couple of times that might work for everybody at that time. Okay, thank you. And for the community members, I know we put out notices to the community for volunteers to serve on all these different committees as well. So I know that'll happen now that we're in the new year. And I guess the other thing is that we're still in Zoom meeting world, so that kind of helps as well for now. Okay, so now that we've established that, I need a motion for this item?
Francine, I make a motion.
Thank you, Francine. And a second?
This is Scott, I make the second.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, questions or comments? Any other questions or comments on any of these committees? No? Okay. We go to the vote for, for how it is right now, and then we can visit and fill the seats. The remaining seats in August. So for how it's presented now, how do you vote, Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Mesika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, we move on to number two, Recommended Committees. Finance Committee. Board of Ed Members, Ms. Cunningham. Tentative and To Be Determined, Community Members, To Be Determined. B Policy Committee, Board of Ed Members, To Be Determined. C Brewster Education Foundation, Board of Ed Members, Mr. Gretzner Tentative. And D School Counseling Advisory Committee, Board of Ed Members, To Be Determined. So again, same, same thing here. We have for Finance Committee. Carrie, you were there. Do you want to continue with that? Is anyone else dying to get on there?
Yeah, I'd like to continue.
Okay, and there'll be opportunity, because we still need to fill a second seat. So when we, we come around to this next meeting, I just want to give the opportunity to the new trustees at that time. So, um. Okay, anyone else interested, or we're okay for right now? Okay, so Carrie Cunningham, and then Policy Committee?
So Sonia, I was on that last year. I'd be happy to stay on that.
Okay. Anyone else? With, uh, no one? Okay, all right, so thank you, Eric. Let's see, and then Brewster Education Foundation. Eric, I know you were serving in that role. That's just one person that serves. They have in their charter to have one board. We always used to think it was a board liaison, but you actually are more than a liaison. You are a, considered a full member under their charter and a liaison to the board. So Eric, did you want to continue, or did you want to see if anyone else was interested for this upcoming year?
I'm fine, but I know we're always looking for members, so I would encourage anyone else on the board to...
Just join as a regular member?
Just jump right in. Absolutely, plenty of room.
Okay, um. So, thank you, Eric. And then School Counseling Advisory Committee. I know that that, things got put on hold this year because of Corona taking over. I don't know if one of the administrators maybe wants to comment on the distinction between that. I know it's a specifically kind of defined new committee that was, you know, put into a mandate. But the distinction between that and the Wellness Committee, perhaps?
Michelle, Dr. Gosh? Happily, thank you. So this, there's a specific school counseling plan that we are required to have in place. So the role of this committee would be to give feedback on that plan. Along with our members would be school counselors, administrators, teachers, parents. And the meetings are minimal, maybe twice a year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gosh. Anyone interested in this? And I assume we would, we would try to arrange the same scenario where everyone, we could find a time that everybody could meet.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
Scott, okay. And then Scott. Okay, so. We'll come back to it. So what we'll do at the next meeting is we'll have the names as confirmed, and then we'll add, and we'll go through and add another, you know, round of people. So for this item, as we just discussed, I need a motion.
Francine, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And a second?
I guess I'll second, Francine. Scott.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this section, this item, these items? Okay, hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote? Carrie, are you muted?
No, I, I'm just, my computer keeps slowing down, so you were talking really slow, Sonia. I vote yes.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Mesika, yes. And this motion passes. Okay, um. So that actually finishes the reorg portion of the meeting. And we have to do that every year. So for public remarks, I'll just comment that comments have been coming in, as well as letters of interest for the trustee positions. And I believe that's all that has come in recently. If I'm forgetting anything that anyone's seen outside of that, but I think they've, they've all been within the context of, of that, of the search, so.
Yeah, that's correct, Sonia.
Okay. So we can move on to action items. So one, Approval of Bus Bond Approved on June 9, 2020 by Qualified Voters of Brewster Central School District. And this is a roll call vote. So first, does someone want to comment from the administration on this item?
Sure, so this is just accepting the results of the Proposition Number Two. Back in March, you approved the first resolution, which was to authorize the vote. And this is the second resolution, which accepts the results of that vote.
Great, thank you. I need a motion for this item?
I'll make the motion, Sonia. It's Carrie.
Thank you. And a second?
Eric seconds the motion.
Thank you. And since we're doing roll call votes anyway. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Mesika, yes. And this motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, action item number two. Resolution to Utilize Cooperative Purchasing Contracts in accordance with General Municipal Law 10316.
Yeah, so this is a resolution that reinforces general municipal law and identifies four separate independent private cooperatives that are joint purchasing cooperatives. One being Sourcewell, which is formerly NJPA, National Joint Powers Alliance, the second, P E P P M. Third, TIPS, fourth is C K E P. And again, these are all private purchasing cooperatives that meet the requirements of general municipal law in terms of competing bidding.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Francine, I make the motion.
Thank you. And a second?
This is Scott, I'll make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Mesika, yes. And the motion passes 5-0. Okay, action item number three. Approval of Instructional Services and Related Services Contracts. A LearnWell. B Four Winds. C Hawthorne Foundation. D New York School for the Deaf. E Greenberg North Castle. F Westchester Exceptional Children. G Greenberg Graham UFSD. H Green Chimneys. I Cardinal Hayes. J John A Coleman. K Hillside at Bedford Central School District. And L Nest at Bedford, Bedford Central School District.
Yeah, so these are instructional services contracts for our special needs students, which have been, of course, approved by Dr. Kennedy and our attorneys and for the board's approval.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
I'll make the motion, Sonia. It's Carrie.
Thank you. And a second?
This is Eric, I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Mesika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Number four, Approval of Contracts Agreements. For A 403B, 457B Plan Administration. B Student Accident Insurance and Excess Coverage. Victor?
Yeah, so the 403B Plan Administration is to ensure that we do not allow our employees to exceed the IRS thresholds for contributing to their 403B plans, among other things. And the second item is... And the second item is the renewal of our student accident insurance policy. Student accident insurance not being a required insurance, but we have board policy that that actually does require it. I should say it's not required by state law, but it is required by board policy and student accident insurance, just for your information, is secondary to the primary, parents' primary insurance.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Francine, I make a motion.
Thank you. In a second.
This is Scott. I make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, number five, Approval of Purchased Contracts Pursuant to Competitive Bids. A Child Nutrition Service Items and B Transportation Vehicle Parts.
Yeah, so these are pretty typical. Each year, we have our child nutrition department bids out food service items and our transportation department bids out bus replacement parts, mostly for international bus parts, which is most of our fleet, as well as Bluebird Bus Parts.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
This is Eric. I'll second.
Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos? That was kind of all delayed, yes. I was making for the yes. Sorry, Francine.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, number six, Approval of Non-Union Personnel Salary Increases.
Yes, so this resolution notes the annual salary increases for those individuals outside of a bargaining unit. These employees are subject to annual increases approved by the board each year. These are the recommended increases, which are in line with employees within one of our four bargaining units.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Francine, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
This is Scott. I'll make the second.
Thank you, Scott. Questions or comments on this item?
I know we've discussed this before, but I'm just concerned that going into this upcoming financial year and the future years, and this is a very minor piece of the whole transaction, but I'm just very hesitant to go with maxes on anything at this time. Not because they don't deserve it, but just more from a financial aspect. That's just my, my take on them.
Okay, any other questions or comments from anyone else on the board? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to the vote. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
No.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. The motion passes four with one objection, no abstentions. Did I say that right? I think so. Yes, okay. We move on to action item number seven, Approval of 2020/21 Substitution Rates.
Yes, right. So this resolution simply establishes the per diem substitute rates for non-instructional employees within certain titles. The rates that are being proposed are aligned with neighboring districts in our area and are subject each year to the board's approval.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
This is Eric. I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
So are these rates an increase from last year or they are? Or they're still last year's rates? So they're slightly higher, Eric, particularly the minimum wage is subject to an increase at 1,250. So that's why you're seeing that noted increase and there's some modest increases along with the secretarial, I think, is going up $2 from the last year's rate, which is more aligned with neighboring districts in the area.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. We can go to the vote. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. The motion passes 5-0. Approval, number eight, Approval of Separation Agreement and Release for Employee Number 119.
Okay, am I doing that one? It's separation agreement for employee 119.
Yeah.
Basically, as has been discussed, yes. If there's anything you wanted to add. Okay, so I need a motion for this item.
It's Francine. I make the motion.
Okay, thank you. In a second.
This is Scott. I make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, we can go to the vote. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. The motion passes 5-0. Okay, action item number nine, Approval of Policies. First read, 5, 6, 7, 6, Privacy and Security for Student Data and Teacher and Principal Data. Second read, 15, 10, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
I'll take this one. Thank you. These policies have been vigorously reviewed by our policy committee and have been run through our attorneys as well. So we submit these policies for your first and second read respectively.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please, for this item.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Eric makes the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, Consent Agenda. Anything that stands out, Mr. Dr. Harrington? Do you want to share? No one?
Dr. Harrington, you there?
I'm sorry, you broke up, Sonia.
There he is.
Is there anything you wanted to share in particular? Yeah.
Consent Agenda?
Yeah.
Just a quick note of congratulations. Joe Cristiano is being appointed this evening as the School Garage Supervisor in the Consent Agenda. A promotion. He's been formerly our foreman for the evening overseeing our mechanics. So it's just certainly just a note of congratulations to him.
Great, thank you. Okay, I need a motion for-
I don't know if you heard me.
Yep, we did. I need a motion for the Consent Agenda.
Francine, I make the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
This is Scott. I make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Couple little. I have a, on the liaison appointments, are there some positions we're not filling? Because it's like there isn't a math one in the high school. And I'm just curious, there's certain things that all the other buildings have a math person and they, for some reason, the high school does not.
Right. It's a good question, Scott. So we are filling those positions. They need to be posted for because those are positions that need to be posted based on retirements. So we do expect to have those appointments for August 14th.
Okay.
Yeah.
The salary for the provisional assignment of the School Garage Supervisor, that was the salary of the previous position? When somebody else had that position, I guess?
That, that's competitive with the predecessor, yes. I don't have the numbers offhand, but it's, it's in that neighborhood. I can't, I can't say with certainty that it's the same or slightly higher or lower.
Okay.
So I can circle back to you on that.
That's fine. And the substitute appointments. We have a number of retirees that are substitute. I guess that's standard policy in the district because they're like a known entity and it's easier to deal with?
Sure, if they possess an interest in coming back as a per diem substitute and there's no reservations, we certainly make every effort to have them appointed as such.
And the training appointments, is there some type of window on them? Because I know we did this last year when we changed departments, you want the previous person there to help in the transition. Is it a three month, a six month? Or is there, I think last year we did a number of hours or something?
Are you asking about the mentor?
The training appointments?
Training?
Five. The confidential secretaries, senior clerks.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. So your question is?
Is there a window, a maximum number of hours? How long are they in that appointment?
I'd say we've been judicial depending on what the needs are of the individual who's transitioning to that role. So we have certainly been prudent with time, but we've also recognized the needs that an individual may have in having a successful transition. So we haven't established a set number of hours.
Thank you.
But it is something that we do pay attention to.
I'm sorry, Scott. I just wanted to also reinforce that the breakage that we always have whenever we have new employees in new positions, that there is significant savings from the, you know, person who either retired or resigned compared to the new employee that's hired.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I just like, I like seeing that they're bringing in the new people, so there won't be a hiccup. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We can, no more, no more vote, comments, sorry. We can go to the vote. Carrie Cunningham, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. And the motion passes 5-0. Okay, we are now on to remarks. Any board remarks? There really weren't any committee updates, I don't think, but any, anything anyone wants to share?
Sonia, can I, can I just jump in real quick? I want to, first, I want to congratulate Joe in the Transportation Department for his promotion also. And on behalf of the entire executive team, we respectfully congratulate the Board of Education on their, you know, on their transition now to the new school year. We want to congratulate President Sonia Masika. Congratulations to Vice President Carrie Cunningham and welcome Francine Santos. And also welcome Lauren.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to welcome Francine. You get ripped because you're the new. That's what, I guess that's what we do. But welcome and I congratulate Carrie on returning and to her appointment as Vice President again and Sonia as President. It's a tough role and we all appreciate that Sonia and Carrie take those roles, so we don't have to. Thank you.
Well, I'll just provide at least just a reminder to the community that if someone hasn't received the link for some reason or a text or an email, you can visit our district website on our board page. On the left side, you will see trustee search. You can click on that and access a link to submit a letter of interest to the board if you are interested in us considering you for the two trustee positions. There's also a tab link that you can click on there for the community to just comment on anything related to the search. And the agenda is also there, the timeline that we will be following. So, you know, feel free to check that out. And just our next meeting, if I have it correct, our next board, official board meeting will be August 18th. But again, there are other dates in there in terms of when we will be doing the interviews. And there'll be a public work session so the public can view and watch us as we do the interviews as well. So, yeah, anything anyone else wants to add?
I just wanted to add that I'm going to be attending the Summer Law Conference virtually on July 21st and 22nd. So I'll report back at our next meeting on any, you know, important topics.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think we are done then. So the public can always email the board and superintendent@boe@brewsterschools.org. We do have executive session. We didn't quite finish up earlier. So we need to adjourn into executive session now for the purpose of discussion on our, the superintendent's contract. And I need a motion for that, please. Just, oh, actually, I'm sorry. Let me just state, we will not be returning to public session to take any action. We're just adjourning to executive session for the purpose of a discussion. So if I may have a motion for that, please.
I'll make the motion, Sonia. It's Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. And second?
Eric will make the second.
Okay, thank you. And to adjourn, how do you vote? Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Francine Santos?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. Motion passes 5-0. We are adjourned to executive session at 7:49. Thank you, everyone.